Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, July 21st, 2020, and I would like to welcome you to the Pittsburgh City Council meeting. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording this for public broadcast. I would now ask Counselor Green to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
The following counselors have logged in and are present at tonight's meeting. President Kuschmerich, Counselor Boishman, Counselor Kutcher, Counselor Deen Talley, Counselor Fleming, Counselor Green, Counselor Schultz, Counselor Squallia, Counselor Ben Hasenga, Counselor Walsh, and Counselor Zarella.
Counselors, with a motion relative to suspension of the rules from remote participation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would make a motion that we suspend all rules of this body or of our parliamentary authority that are in conflict with either the remote participation format or with the state's guidelines for remote participation during the COVID-19 pandemic.
I have a motion and second. This will be done by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Yay.
Counselor Ben Hasenga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kuschmerich?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kutcher?
Yes.
Counselor Deen Talley?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Motion carries. Next, public forum. Public has been advised to contact the city clerk's office by noon today regarding comments of not more than two minutes, and no members of the public have been brought to our attention. We do, however, have Mayor Deen Talley, who wishes to speak under public comments at this time. Going to unmute him. Apologize, Mayor. I muted you. You are, the floor is now yours when you are unmuted.
Good evening, counselors. I would like to take this opportunity to address the council regarding the appointment process and some of the issues counselors raised regarding the appointment of the fire chief. The mayor's authority to appoint a fire chief is only limited by the requirement that the mayor select a candidate from a list of three candidates certified through the civil service process. If the top candidate is not selected, then the decision must be supported by reasonable justification. That reasonable justification can include the experiences that one has had over their years of service. This is true despite the so-called 80/20 rule, which council mistakenly applied, thereby intruding on the mayor's authority to select an appointee. Indeed, when council engages in picking one candidate over another, council tests the bounds of its confirmatory power, if not violates the separation of powers concept embodied in our charter. Further, I suggest to you that the confirmation process of an appointee is intended to be limited to a review of the credentials of the mayor's appointee and not a review of the exercise of the mayor's discretion, nor should a confirmation proceeding be manipulated by the threat of litigation or considerations as to what might be most politically expedient. Confirmation hearings based on these considerations are unfair to the mayor's appointees, particularly to those who have spent a lifetime dedicating themselves to the betterment of our community. First, there is a misunderstanding of the selections committee's role in the discharge of the mayor's responsibility to make an appointment. Any requirement in our code regarding the constitution of the selections committees unenforceable, as it is inconsistent with the charter's clear directive that appointments are to be made by the mayor, only to be confirmed by the city council. The selections committee, whose only task in this instance was to provide me with two candidates to consider, is not empowered to make the selection. I would like to address the council's inaccurate assertion that an appointment from the certified list violates the law or the public policy of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Respectfully, I believe that counselors were ill-advised that the law required a bypass letter be filed with this city council or some other entity. This is not the process. Bypass letters are submitted to candidates after a final decision has been made. Therefore, that letter would be generated only after this council confirms the mayoral appointment. If the person bypassed files an appeal, the Civil Service Commission would review the bypass. In doing so, the commission would provide deference to the appointing authority, which in this case is the mayor's office. The commission would determine if there were adequate reasons when weighed by an unprejudiced mind guided by common sense and the correct application of the law. The review process is to guard against political considerations, favoritism, and bias. I would welcome a review from the Civil Service Commission of any hiring decision. I would look forward to any opportunity to those to validate my decisions regarding appointments. I maintain a high level of confidence that those decisions would be upheld. I am confident because due diligence was exercised as the decision was reviewed by John Parrow Consulting and Associates, who ran the assessment center, attorney Nicholas Domenello of Valerio Domenello &amp; Hillman LLC, members of the Human Resources Division of Civil Service, the city's Human Resources Director, and the city's Solicitor. These decisions are not made in a vacuum, nor are they made frivolously. Council also suggested that the mayor's office is unable to consider experience, as experience is used in part to calculate the initial civil service rankings. That, too, is incorrect. Supreme Judicial Court has told us that an appointing authority can consider experience when evaluating candidates from a certified list. Specific types of experience matter, particularly when those experiences demonstrate a proven track record of leadership and the situational awarenesses to allow one to deal instinctually with an urgent matter such as an emergency. Historically, appointing authorities have been allowed to justify a bypass based upon an isolated example of community service. Suffice it to say, if a bypass was necessary, a proven track record of leadership coupled with decades of community service would be sufficient justification. For a city council to hold that under no circumstances can a mayor make an appointment of a civil service employee, except from the top of the list removes the power of appointment from the mayor's office and transfers it to the testing authority. Such a promise can only be seen as depriving the people of the city of Pittsburgh from a reasoned approach to appointments. This is an unfortunate precedent, which, if thought through to its logical conclusion, will create an incentive that will only motivate employees to excel at test-taking and self-improvement. Developing themselves through experience will become secondary, if not tertiary, to studying for exams and engaging in self-promotion. Any demonstration of charitable intent on one's resume would be irrelevant. In reliance on this promise, instead of giving back to their communities, future appointees will spend their time achieving what has been called "objective standards of merit." I would be remiss if I failed to mention my concern that there has been a loss of comity, or, as some might say, mutual respect. I am told certain rules prevented me from speaking at council, when ordinarily motions when laid on the table would routinely be removed. This is particularly troubling when counselors inaccurately assess the matter before them. Over the years, had we subordinated our interactions to that of bright-lined rules, I fear our relationship would not be as strong as it is today. For example, you might be aware that our charter provides a formal mechanism in which council can obtain information from both department heads and myself. Could you imagine if that were to be enforced today? I want to assure you, in the importance of keeping open, continuous dialogue with the council, but that privilege should be equally reciprocated. While I feel duty-bound to protect the executive functioning of the mayor's office and preserve the separation of powers, I place a greater importance on a good working relationship with the city council, maintaining successful operations of the Pittsburgh Fire Department, and the overall interest of the city of Pittsburgh. Therefore, I have taken the course of appointing Acting Chief Anthony Marama as my second appointment to the position of chief of the Pittsburgh Fire Department. I am optimistic as fire chief. He will have the chance to develop a proven track record of leadership, and he will capitalize on the opportunity to give back to our community. I wish Acting Chief Marama the best of success and Godspeed. The matter is now before your body. Thank you.
Next, we'll hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening and took up the following matters. Reappointment, member of the Board of Registars term to expire April 1st, 2023 of Mr. Dan H. Milot. That was confirmed unanimously. A new appointment for the member of Board of Registars term to expire April 1st, 2023 of Ms. Alice E. Hillman, that was recommended unanimously as well. And then a new appointment, Chief Engineer Fire Chief for the Pittsburgh Fire Department, to begin on July 27th, 2020 of Mr. Anthony C. Marama. That, too, was adopted and recommended unanimously for appointments. I'd now entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Appointments Committee report?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the Appointments Committee report. Speaking on the motion, we have Counselor Zarella. Just one moment, Counselor. Apologize. Counselor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to congratulate our new fire chief and to thank the mayor for his appointment. I know some of us may have agreements, disagreements, opinions on what the mayor has said earlier tonight. That is not presently before us, so I will not comment on that. However, I do appreciate that the council and the mayor have been able to move past a disagreement and move forward in the interest of the city. I am pleased to vote in favor of this full slate of appointments.
Counselor, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Deen Talley, you next have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been a long time since the last discussion that we had or lack of discussion on the first appointment, and I am all honestly concerned about what I'm going to say tonight, because I don't know if I'm going to be allowed to say. I don't really know anymore what I'm allowed to say and whether or not I'm going to get motioned down. It's very gray to me, because I know I'm supposed to stick to the subject at hand. Would be easier for me if I were able to do that, if I were able to speak last time, but I was not. And I've got a lot of my constituents saying to me, "What's your position on this appointment?" Because I was the only one on the 16th to vote for the mayor's initial appointment. I told everybody that I spoke to that I am going to vote for this appointment, because I am looking at it through the lens of the person that the mayor has selected, as I did the first time. And that, in my opinion, should be what we all focus on, is the person before us, whether that person is qualified or not. And during the first instance, no one said that that person wasn't, and he certainly wasn't, so that's why I voted for him. And it's the same reason I'm voting for the candidate tonight. I have nothing against either one of them, especially the one before us tonight, but it was, it wasn't a hard decision for the first time or the second time. All that matters to me is the person that's put before us went through the process the right way, satisfied civil service requirements. For me, whatever the selection committee says is irrelevant. They have no statutory authority to pick anybody, and I've served on many of them. Those search committees were established a few years ago because of a growing distrust between the former administration and the city council, where there was no process. There was no real interviewing process. It was selections of people that had no business being selected, and that wasn't the case here. So it may confuse some that are watching this, why I would support this person tonight when I supported the last person. That's my reason, because I look at these appointments through the lens of the person that was selected. I don't care who wasn't selected. I don't care what they went through to not be selected. Is the person selected qualified? The answer was yes on the 16th. The answer is yes tonight. So that's why I supported the prior candidate. I'm supporting this one. I'm also very frustrated that I'm allowed to speak tonight, but a month ago I was not. And I understand the rules of moving a question requires a two-thirds vote, and that's what the council did, but it really bothers me that that motion wasn't made tonight again. I mean, with all the respect to my colleagues, we cannot pick and choose when we move the question. To me, it's not fair to not only the council, but to the candidates that are selected, because someone watching this tonight will go, "Well, how come no one was able to defend or speak to someone last time, but this time we are?" And the only thing I can think of is because it's probably understood that this person is going to get confirmed based on the actions of last month. I just think we should be consistent. We should move the question in both instances, but that didn't happen tonight, and that's fine, but I just think we shouldn't be picking and choosing when to move the question. And I hope that we do not do that often, because to move the question because we're concerned that we're going to get ourselves in trouble for saying something, I have all the confidence in the world with the president.
I have a point of order being raised by Counselor Zarella respective to Rule 2.11. And just, Counselor, the floor will return to being yours. I would just ask, we have the item before us. I prefer that we don't re-legislate the rules that were discussed at the last meeting, because there's no rule being discussed before us.
Okay, Mr. President, I respect that.
The floor is yours. I will return it to you now.
I respect that, but I'm telling you, in my 13 years on this council, I don't have any clue anymore what I'm allowed to say and what I'm not to. All right? I think we're following these rules way too strictly. I don't even know what I'm supposed to say anymore, and I apologize for my tone, but I have been called out on rules the last few months. I mean, this is getting to be ridiculous to me.
Counselor, I understand and I hear your frustration. Again, that is not before us at this moment, and I would say that whether it's at the organizational meeting that starts the year or when we return after following the recess, you know, you can introduce rule changes if that's what this body could be.
I certainly intend to.
But again, that's not before us right now. So again, I'll return the floor back to you to discuss the appointments.
Okay, so in closing, I will just say this, that I support the candidate for the reasons that I've stated, and I believe that this is how it should be done. And I just hope that there isn't a precedent established in the future that causes this to happen again. So that was my reasoning and rationale, and I thank you for giving me the time.
I'll just reiterate the same, I think, sentiment that was made earlier, which is, I think in this moment, we'll have to agree to disagree on how we got to this very moment. And, you know, I'll say that before us, you know, this evening, our three appointments, and all three, I find is tremendously qualified for the appointments that are being put for, particularly our chief, our fire chief and chief engineer appointment that is before us this evening. I will happily vote in favor this evening and value the cooperation between the mayor's office and this council that gets us to this point to be able to confirm a chief who is well-qualified this evening to serve as our chief in the years ahead. With that, I have a motion and second, we will adopt this. If there are no concerns, we will adopt this by unanimous consent. I'll pause for a moment if there are any concerns, questions from counselors. Seeing none, we will adopt the Appointments Committee recommendations by unanimous consent. With that, I want to thank and congratulate our members of the Board of the Registars, Dan Milot and Alice Hillman, and sincerely congratulate our new fire chief, permanent fire chief, to begin on July 27th, Chief Anthony C. Marama. With that, counselors, now return back to the agenda. Counselor Squallia, I would ask for a report from the committee on records.
We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second, a motion and second to accept. We'll do so by unanimous consensus unless there is any objection. Seeing no objection, the Records Committee report has been adopted. Next, Counselors, we have some communications before us this evening. Communication from His Honor, the mayor. There are two letters of appointment before us this evening, and I will invite Chief Martino to join us, as he has just tuned in. Thank you, Chief, for joining us, and I'll turn the floor over to you momentarily. Those two letters of appointment concern the first Sergeant Mark Jackson being appointed as a special police officer for the city of Pittsburgh, and second, the provisional police sergeant Demetrius D. Phillips to the position of permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. With that, I would like to welcome Chief Martino. Good evening, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, counselors. On July 2nd of this past year, I made a request to the appointing authority, Mayor Deen Talley, requesting the permanent promotion of Demetrius Phillips to the rank of police sergeant in the Pittsburgh Police Department. For the last six months, Sergeant Demetrius has been working under a provisional status due to a vacancy that I had, and with the impending retirement of Sergeant Mark Jackson, as of this Friday, I was given the approval from the appointing authority to promote Sergeant Phillips as a permanent police sergeant. Prior to the COVID world that we're living in now, we would have had the opportunity to invite permanent Sergeant Phillips into the council and applaud his accomplishments. I'm here tonight saying that he is one of the finest sergeants that have come across my desk in many years. I'm very excited to have him on my command staff, and I think he has a tremendous amount of insight to bring to the Pittsburgh Police Department, and I'm extremely excited that he is now a permanent police sergeant with the Pittsburgh Police Department. On the other note, at the end of this week, we're losing a very talented sergeant who was given 26 years of dedicated service to the city of Pittsburgh, and on behalf of the Pittsburgh Police Department, I would like to recognize Sergeant Mark Jackson for his efforts, and in a couple of weeks, you're going to see his name through the appointments process to become a special police officer. But this being his last week as a full-time police officer, I would like to thank him for his duty to the city of Pittsburgh. So on one hand, we're welcoming Sergeant Phillips on board, and we're wishing the very best to Sergeant Jackson as he begins his new career.
Chief, thank you. You just said it all. We're an incredibly fortunate city to have the years of distinguished service and expertise of Sergeant Jackson, only to have that, his absence then filled by someone incredibly talented and just with wonderful respect in our city of Demetrius Phillips. So just, I think, as a city, we're incredibly fortunate to have both of those individuals serving us. And so counselors, I have a couple of counselors looking to speak. This is normally, we'd normally be bringing both in and congratulating them publicly, and it's really unfortunate that we can't do that. So while these are communications, we normally wouldn't speak to it. I'm going to have Counselor Walsh, and then we have Counselor Deen Talley. Counselor Walsh, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say it's with sadness that I recognize the retirement of Sergeant Mark Jackson. He's been an amazing officer for the city of Pittsburgh for his 26 years, and it's with great pleasure that I welcome Demetrius Phillips. He was a wonderful student at Pittsburgh State University, and he has shown himself to be an excellent police officer, and I look forward to having him fill the role as sergeant from Pittsburgh PB. So welcome. Goodbye, Sergeant Jackson. We will miss you, and welcome, Sergeant Phillips. We will welcome you. Thank you.
Counselor Deen Talley, the floor is now yours.
Yes, I just wanted to echo the sentiments that Counselor Walsh said about Sergeant Jackson and speak about new Sergeant Demetrius Phillips. Demetrius and I go way back, back to the days of high school football, and there isn't a nicer gentleman that I've come across in many, many, many years. Demetrius is a very kind man, a very loyal public servant, and I believe the police department is, if there's anyone that can fill in Sergeant Jackson's shoes immediately, it's him. And I'm very pleased to see that he's now on the command staff. He is great with the community, and he knows this community well, and the residents of Pittsburgh, while losing a great public servant to retirement, is gaining just as good of one in his place. And so I congratulate him and his family, and I'm very happy to see that he's been promoted. Thank you.
So, counselors, we have, I would ask that we send the first communication to the Special Appointments Committee meeting, because we are entering recess. We normally wouldn't hold an appointments meeting. We have a special meeting, the city council, on August 4th. So I would ask that by unanimous consent, we send the first letter of communication for a special police officer, Mark Jackson, to be appointed on August 4th. Unless there is an objection, we will send that to an August 4th Appointments Committee. Seeing no objection, next, we have the provisional police sergeant, Demetrius D. Phillips, to the position of permanent police sergeant for the city of Pittsburgh. That requires no special appointment or action. That will simply be placed on file in the city clerk's office, and we will gratefully and enthusiastically welcome Demetrius to his new role as a permanent police sergeant. Thank you, Chief Martino, for speaking to those two items. And since you're with us, I would ask that if we could just skip ahead, counselors, you'll see on the Agenda 17820, we have an annual report from the Pittsburgh Police Department for the year 2019. Before we place that on file in the city clerk's office, I would like to invite Chief Martino to speak to it.
Thank you again, Mr. President. This past week, counselors, I had the privilege to submit my 2019 annual report to the honorable body for their review. When it initially went out electronically, I was not satisfied with the appearance of it. So you each received a hard copy of the annual report this past week, and I hope you've had some time to review it. It's a lengthy document, and after this meeting tonight, if any counselor does have any questions, I'd be happy to sit down at any time and go over any of the statistics that are outlined within that annual report. I'd like to start off by just thanking the men and women of the Pittsburgh Police Department for their exceptional dedication to duty this past year. Their dedication during this extremely challenging time that we're all facing just speaks volumes of what we have employed here as police officers in the city of Pittsburgh. And without their hard work and dedication to duty, none of the information that's reflective in this 40-plus-page report would even be possible. So I sincerely thank the members of this department, and that also consists of my civilian staff here. Too often, we overlook our civilian staff, but we really are a team effort here, and none of this would have been possible without the hard work of every person that works within 20 Elm Street. You're going to notice a little bit of different feel from this year's report based on the current times and the trends that we're facing. I thought it was extremely important to start my annual report reflecting on what the mission of the Pittsburgh Police Department is, and you're going to see that in my initial letter, and it describes what each and every person in this department is held to a standard, to commit the best possible policing to the city of Pittsburgh. In past years, I would be sitting in front of the council, and I would be reciting In past years, I would be sitting in front of the council and I would be reciting some of the reductions in crime stats and reductions in traffic accidents. That information's in this year's report. However, it's not, those aren't the items I'd like to reflect on this year. I, like I said, I'd like to begin with a reflection of the mission of the Pittsburgh Police Department. But as you're going through my annual report, I really want you to pay attention to pages 35 through 40, 41 and 42. That is exactly what epitomizes the Pittsburgh Police Department in this community. The relationships we have, the engagement that we have, the end page of this report is truly what policing is. You know, there's a lot of rhetoric going on right now. I mean, whether it's at the state level or the federal level, talking about police reform and trying to make policing a, to correct some of the problems that may be out there. I think this report is reflective of how lucky we are here in the city of Pittsburgh and the commitment that the men and women in this police department do each and every day for the city of Pittsburgh. I could speak volumes on the other parts of this annual report. There's significant data, especially for some of the newer councilors. You're going to see data on traffic studies, traffic accidents. There is a wealth of information in there that you can bring back to your constituents. I always hold off on making this annual report public until each and every council has the opportunity to review. Tomorrow, this report will be submitted to our local news medias. I feel it's important to have that transparency. In addition, this annual report will be placed on the city website for all of our constituents to read and review. It's a piece of work that I'm very proud of, proud to present to you. I'd like to give my crime analysis once again, Ms. Andrews Christie. She's the one that put this together for me, but it's a, it's a piece of work that we're proud of and it gives me pleasure to present it to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I'd like to commend you and your, and your entire department and staff. You know, we just, we just spoke at length about two individual members of your, of your department, but really it's, it's the entire, you know, ranks from patrol officer up to chief that deserve, you know, the kudos and congratulations for, for the data and the accomplishments that's contained in this report. Really reflects incredible work that you do day in and day out to keep this community safe and to build goodwill and relationships throughout our, our community. So I have Counselor Boishman who wishes to speak. Counselor Boishman, I'm going to unmute you now. Floor is yours, sir.
Chief, how are you? I want to say thank you very much. I did read your report today. And I want to say thank you very much for taking the time to train new officers about mental health. It's very critical today in today's society. But I, I don't know if it's a good time if I can ask a couple of questions about accidents on my area, Electric Avenue, Clarendon Street and Kimbo Street.
I, I would, I would welcome the opportunity to discuss any traffic issues on any, any ward within the city. I would leave that up to Mr. President if you want.
Chief, I appreciate your willingness to, Counselor Boishman, this is, this is a report and it's certainly an opportunity to ask about the statistics and about the report that the, the chief has put in front of us, not an opportunity for us to ask specific questions about specific areas of the city. So if you have questions about the data that's contained in the report or some of the accomplishments of the chief, as, as mentioned, by, by all means, the floor is still yours. But we will not entertain individual questions. You know, I'd ask that you, you direct those to the chief tomorrow or in subsequent days.
I will make myself available to any counselor that has any question regarding any of the statistical data that's contained within that report.
Okay, I'll wait till tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Boishman. I appreciate it. That's it. I have a, a motion. There was a, I apologize, councilors, on the agenda, there was a clerical error that listed this as the, the Pittsburgh Fire Department annual report. I have a motion and second to amend the word "fire" and replace with "police." We'll do that by unanimous consent unless there is any objection. Seeing no objection, it is, that amendment has been made. I would now entertain a, a motion and second to adopt and accept the unanimous, accept the amended communication.
Don't move.
I have a motion and second to accept the amended communication and the Pittsburgh Police Department report for the year 2019. We'll do that by unanimous consent unless there is any objection. Seeing no objection, it is accepted and placed on file in the city clerk's office. Again, Chief, thank you and please convey our thanks to your entire department.
Thank you. And on behalf of the entire police department, thank you for your continued support, councilors.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Good night, Chief.
Good evening.
Next, councilors, we have a communication from A.J. Turigny, Chief of Staff, to the mayor regarding municipal aggregation plan, public hearing notice. I have been asked to read this communication because of specific logistical requirements. So bear with me here. Notice a public review and public hearing, city of Pittsburgh municipal aggregation plan. On May 7th, 2019, the city council, the city of Pittsburgh unanimously passed the resolution to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 164, Section 134A, and publicly declare its intent to become an aggregator of electric power on behalf of its residential and business electric customers. And the, and to authorize the mayor, as provided by such statute, to research and develop a plan for a review by the citizens of the city of Pittsburgh detailing processes and consequences of aggregation and to negotiate and enter into such contracts for power supply pursuant to the plan with the understanding that if a power supply contract is executed, individual consumers would retain the option not to participate in the aggregation plan. City officials with the assistance of aggregation consultant Good Energy LP researched and developed a municipal aggregation plan for submission to the Department of Public Utilities for approval pursuant to MGL Chapter 164, Section 134A, which authorized the municipality to secure electric supply on behalf of consumers within its municipal borders through a municipal aggregation program. The objectives of the municipal aggregation program are to give residents more competitive choice for their electric supply, achieve longer-term price stability, offer more renewable price options and lower the cost of electricity. Although savings are not guaranteed. Eligible electricity consumers are not, not already enrolled with a competitive electric supplier would automatically be enrolled in the municipal aggregation program unless they choose to opt out, in which case they would continue to receive basic service provided by Unitile. During the aggregation program, any participant can opt out of aggregation program at any time without penalty or termination fee. A copy of the municipal aggregation plan of the city of Pittsburgh is now available for review on the city website and at the following locations, the Pittsburgh Public Library, 610 Main Street, the mayor's, 166 Boulder Drive, and Strong Style Coffee located at 137 Boulder Drive in Pittsburgh. The department requires a two-public review period for residents to review and comment on the municipal aggregation plan. The public review period, as announced by the city website, will be conducted from July 21st until September 3rd, 2020. A written comment can be submitted by email to atourigny@fitzbergma.gov. That's atourigny@fitzbergma.gov or through mail with the attention of AJ Turigny at 166 Boulder Drive, Suite 108, Pittsburgh, Mass. 01420. The city council will hold a special, will hold a public hearing at their meeting on September 3rd for any residents that wish to make oral comments on the municipal aggregation plan. A representative of the aggregation consultant Good Energy LLP, LP will be present at the public hearing to answer any questions. Any person desiring further information regarding the municipal aggregation plan of the Pittsburgh, the city of Pittsburgh, or this notice of public review and public hearing can contact, again, AJ Turigny. So with that, I would, we will by unanimous consent, accept this communication, place it on file in the city clerk's office and send it to a special hearing as outlined in the, in the communication on the September 3rd agenda. Unless there was objection, we will do that through unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it will be so done. Next, we have communication from Tom Skorowski, Executive Director of Planning and Community Development regarding Phase One zoning changes, regarding petition 2920 with the link provided on today's agenda. It simply asks that we accept this communication, place it on file, city clerk's office through unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, we will do so. Next, we will hear an Economic Development Committee report, meeting of July 15th, 2020. Counselor Van Helsing, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Economic Development Committee met on, I'm sorry, July 15th, 2020 to hear petition 16020 by Counselor Paul Boishman to petition the city to not demolish the building at 617 Water Street, but rather take the funds allocated for this and use them to demolish 40, 40 and a half, which is already in progress, and 44 Nashville Street in order to improve the neighborhood with single-family lots. The committee voted five to zero to give petition leave to withdraw. The building at 617 Water Street has presented a hazard and blight on a main entry route into the city for many years. It is the opinion of the committee that the demolition of this building is in the best interest of the city. Redevelopment of the building does not appear to be financially feasible for the city at this time. The committee also considered the properties on Nashville Street and agree that they are in poor condition, present a blight on the surrounding neighborhood. However, the city has already begun the process of demolishing the building at 40 and a half Nashville Street, which will make the redevelopment of 40 Nashville Street more feasible. The owner of 44 Nashville Street has already applied for apartment for the removal of this building. The community development office also presented the results of the downtown parking study prepared for the city in Pittsburgh State University, as well as the planned phases of implementing improvements to how parking is regulated and enforced in the city. The initial phase centers on the shift from regulating parking through meters and lots with fixed pricing to a system driven by demand. The idea is to make parking free and as easy as possible to support local businesses and uses. Time limits will still be enforced through the use of license plate reader technology to encourage space turnover. This will also allow FPD to enforce parking restrictions on Saturdays when park enforcement personnel are not currently active. As demand for parking increases to a predetermined level, for example, 85%, enforcement will be modified in future phases to charge for parking using multi-space meters. This gives the city the flexibility to adjust parking regulations to stimulate demand in the downtown area.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Motion to accept.
I have a motion and second to accept. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman. I'm going to unmute you here. Counselor Boishman, the floor is yours.
I keep on forgetting about that, sorry. On the motion, on the 160, I mean, 160-20, I want to talk about that for a minute. I put 40, 40 and a half and 44. I knew they were coming down. I just want the council to know, but I was trying to give an example that you get a big, a bigger return on your money than what we're going to get by tearing down 617 Water Street. Water Street, to me, is still a perfectly good building, needs some work and we could turn around with an RFP and sell it. Now, we sat on that piece of property for five years. Five years we sat on it. We, we were arguing whether we should put insurance on the thing or shouldn't we? We argue about should we fix the portholes in the driveway or shouldn't we? Then all of a sudden, we were going to turn around and sell it. Then we clean it out. We paid to clean it out. And now we want to tear it down. There's nobody that's going to build on that place. I, I keep on saying, you'll be better off to tear down more houses in condensed neighborhoods than you are tearing down this. This is just going to be another place where it's going to be blight and overgrowth. And our economic team, what we're going to see growing there is trees coming out of the asphalt. We're not going to do anything with it. If we had any kind of a plan for Water Street, we would have done, we would have done it 10 years ago. And we haven't done nothing, nothing at all. In my opinion, I really believe we're stagnant. We haven't improved that much. So I think we're making a big mistake investing this money. I don't think we have a plan, just like we had a plan five years ago. We were going to get rid of the property. That's why we took it back in taxes and we done nothing with it. And we done nothing with a lot of property on Water Street that the city owns. And it's a mess. It's a mess. So that's why I put the petition in was only to give an example of the different neighborhoods and the area that we can make. You get more money on returns when you thin out, when you thin out neighbors where they got light houses. Because now you're increasing the value of the properties around you. You're not increasing nothing there. There's nothing there to increase. So I rest my case because I won't vote for this. I'm voting against it.
Counselor Dina Tally, you now have the floor.
Thank you. It, it's. I just want the public to understand that the city has not sat on its hands. The city has not, not done anything. The, this, I want to remind my colleagues and the public that since 2016, there has been a tremendous amount of demolition investment through partnerships with CDBG, the FRA, and free cash that the mayor has appropriated. There were articles in the Sentinel two or three years ago talking about how this is the most influx of demolition money we have spent in this city in well over 20 years. And I believe the number is well over 1.2 million, probably a lot more than that. But I recall, not in recent months, but as Chair of Finance, we have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in the last several years in demolishing blighted properties. And more than at any other time. So to, we are not sitting on our hands. We are not, not doing anything. We are actually doing more than what has been done in the last two decades and that's just a fact. I don't believe it's, it's right to, to say these things because we have Mr. Skorowski and Ms. Bohart present. And as they've said in the committee meeting, there is a plan. This was vetted by the NICE committee and several public safety professionals. There is a reason behind why this building was chosen. And it was not chosen as an either or proposition where we're going to do this building instead of the other ones that were discussed. There is a specific reason why we're doing this building. Everyone agrees the building's an eyesore. Everyone agrees the building's been vacant for decades. Everyone agrees that it's in a main corridor. It's the first building you see, and I drove by there yesterday, in fact, and contrary to what has been stated in the past, even though there is overgrowth, you can still see it. It looks terrible. So it's the first building on that, 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 that stretch that needs to come down. Now, are there other properties in that stretch that need to come down? Of course, but as the, the community development director stated in the meeting, baby steps. And, and I want people to understand demolishing properties is not something as easy as point to it and it's gone. You need the funds. You need to do environmental studies. You need to do an assessment. Sometimes the city wants to put it back on the tax rolls instead of demolishing it and they don't succeed. So, so to say that nothing's been done is not a correct statement. And I, and I recall, there have been properties years ago that were slated to come down. They kept getting delayed because of environmental regulations or some, some obstacles that we encountered. So I just want people to listen that it's not that nothing's been done. More has been done in the last four years than at any time in the last 20. And, and, and so there are a host of properties that need to come down, but one at a time here. And that one needs to come down. And as I said in the meeting, there are residents that live behind that building, up on the hill. I think it's Lancaster Street, the bottom of Cleveland, Lyman Avenue. These residents were elated when they heard this was coming down because all it has invited is trouble. So it's a step in the right direction and Water Street needs a lot of attention. You know, we, we talk about downtown a lot. Water Street needs to be prioritized because that's the first stretch that people, both in the city and outside of the city, especially those coming to the college, university, that's what they see. Some of these problem properties. So this will take care of one. So this will take care of one of those problems. So I supported it in committee. I support it again now. But I just want to make it clear, and I can't reiterate this enough, that to say that nothing's been done or we sat on our hands is an inaccurate statement. These things take time whether we like it or not. So, you know, I'll just point to one example. That, the old fire station at the, the intersection of Water and the Fifth Street Bridge. That was purchased by a private company after years of neglect and vacancy. There's a business there now. So the city does want to market it, does want to put it back on the tax rolls. But in this case, this building's not going to be invested by anybody because the amount of money it requires. Maybe it will be invested in if it's an empty lot. But if it isn't, it's better than nothing. It's better than leaving it there. So let's get rid of it and move on to the next one. And we talked about that in the committee meeting. I hope, they already understand this. There is a continued focus of Water Street. There needs to be a major one on Water Street. This is the first step. So let's get it taken care of and then move on to the next one. Thank you.
Next, we have Counselor Zarella speaking to the motion.
I'll be very brief, especially since I see that Tom Skorowski would like to speak as well. I just would like to comment that I think that, except under the most exceptional of circumstances, I don't think that the council should be introducing action on specific streets or properties. I think that we frankly lack the expertise to make those fine grains distinctions, except when they are statutorily committed to our discretion. And yes, I agree with you, Mr. President.
So I, I just put in a message. We, we have a motion and second on the floor right now to accept the Economic Development Committee report. So I was just commenting that we, we can't have non-counselors speak at this time. So that said, with all counselors who have, who have spoken at this point, I, I realize we'll do this by, by roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Green. Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
I'm sorry, sir, I couldn't hear you.
That was a yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerak?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman? Counselor Boishman?
Oh.
He's voicing no.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Nidhesh Pali?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
That is 10 to 1.
The motion carries. I, I want to thank, I know we didn't have Mr. Skorowski and Ms. Bohart speak, but I just want to thank them for being present to speak on the items this evening. Next before us this evening, we have public hearings and councils. Before I open these public hearings, I, I just want to preface this with, we're going to open these this evening. This is an opportunity for us to, to ask questions of, of the Unitil representative, to express any concerns or express opinions. We, we do however, need to leave these open and resume them until August 4th. Unfortunately, the Sentinel and Enterprise was unable to advertise these with the necessary advertising timeframe according to the constitutional law. Therefore, we'll need to leave these open for two more weeks. And I would ask that counselors, if you intend to speak or you intend to voice opposition, or thi- this would be the opportunity so that it's simply a, a, a vote and accepting any public comments or, or providing an opportunity for folks to provide a public comment. And then we can move into voting procedures when we return on August 4th. That said, we'll take these in order, 16420, Unitil to petition for a new pole, number 8A on Industrial Road, approximately 45 feet from the intersection of Stevens Road, is outlined in the enclosed petition. And I would now declare the hearing open. I'd like to welcome Mark Frappier, who is joining us from Unitil. And Mark, if you could just introduce yourself and, and walk us through what you're proposing. Mark, I think you're muted.
Mark, do you still have your phone with you? Please use your phone if you still have it.
My apologies. I'm Mark Frappier with Unitil. And I'm here to discuss the pole petition. I'm going to turn this off. Sorry about that. So the, we have two pole petitions this evening. We're looking at installing a new pole at the property of 140 Industrial Road, Pittsburgh. We have a business development at that address. And the, the customer has requested that we build a new line extension to the property for their service upgrades. We'll be connecting to...
You're still here. We can hear you.
Okay, so we're requesting a new pole to be installed in front of that property so we can extend overhead lines from existing roadside lines onto the property. It's, it's approximately 30 feet from an existing junction pole at Stevens Road. We will tap on to that existing overhead line to a new pole on property as well to give them their new underground service.
Great. So at this time, I would ask if counselors have questions or comments for, for Unitil?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman, the floor is yours.
Did I hear him right? He said underground?
The, yes, from the, from the pole on private property, the, the customer will be installing an underground primary line to a pad mount transformer location on their property.
You made my day. Okay. Thank you.
Any further counselors with questions or comments? Seeing none, counselor will do this. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? All right. At this point, counselors, I would ask for a motion that we continue the hearing until our August 4th special meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion and second to continue the, the public hearing of 16420 until the August 4th special meeting of the city council. We'll adopt this by unanimous consent unless there is any objection. Seeing none, the hearing is continued. Next, we have 16520, Unitil to petition for new pole, number 5A on Ross Street, approximately 24 feet west of North Street, as outlined in the enclosed petition. Mr. Frappier, I'll ask you to, to represent and introduce this item. I now declare 16520 open.
Thank you. The, the petition here is at the intersection of Ross Street and North. On the Ross Street side, it's just basically up the hill a ways. What's happening is Pittsburgh State University has requested a new primary overhead line feed onto their property at the North Street. There's a parking lot at the corner of North and Ross. There is an existing service there. They plan on doing upgrades. So they have asked us to extend a new feed into their property, where again, we'll have overhead line attachments. We'll cross the road to a private property pole. And then there will be an underground feed to establish a connection to the new Pittsburgh State University electrical switchgear.
Thank you, Mr. Frappier. Are there any questions or comments from counselors?
I got one que- one question, Mr. President.
All right, Counselor, Counselor Boishman, I'd ask you to use the type box next time, but the floor is yours, sir.
All right. Sorry. There we go. My question to you, Mr. President, is this. Can we wait on these petitions until we get some verification from the engineering department, from the DPW?
Counselor, your, your timing is, is opportune. I, I got a communication from the city clerk earlier today. The Commissioner of the DPW, Nicholas Bosonetto, has agreed for all future Unitil poll requests to provide feedback from DPW Engineering to us before we then enter into the public hearing. So that will now be part of the, the process. This is, wasn't part for this one, but it will for all future poll requests. So I thank you in advance to the DPW Commissioner for doing that. That said, I don't believe that we have specific commentary before us this evening.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any further questions from counselors or comments? Seeing none, I'll, I'll ask if there's anyone here in favor of the petition. Is there anyone here speaking in opposition to the petition? That said, I would now ask for a motion and second to continue 16520 to the special meeting.
So moved.
Continue.
Motion and second to, to continue. We'll do this by unanimous consent unless there's objection. Seeing no objection, we will do so. Next. So thank you, Mr. Frappier. I, I appreciate you joining us this evening. And unless there is any specific comment or request, you will not need to join us for the August 4th meeting.
Okay, no representation necessary for the next meeting.
Unless you're here for us, otherwise.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. You as well. All right. Next, counselors, we have, we have orders financed. We have a request for suspension of the rules on all but 17020. So I would ask for a, one suspension of the rules for 167 up to and including 16920.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 166 up to and including 16920. This will be done by roll call vote. Madam Clerk? Who is muted? Sorry.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz? Counselor Squalia?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerak?
Yeah.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
All right, counselors, we'll take these one at a time in, in order, 16620, order that the city of Pittsburgh hereby further amend city council order 17513, see city council order 03716 and the city council order 04817 to approve the expenditure of additional funds from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health opioid abuse prevention collaborative grant in the approximate amount of $25,000, thereby increasing the total grant from $817,499.50 to $842,499.50 for the purpose of said grant, which is to support the partnership of the Monticent Public Health Network. We also have joining us Director of the Board of Health, Steve Curry. If counselors have questions or comments, I see that we have Counselor Boishman. Was that from the previous motion?
Oh, that was from the previous.
Thank you, sir. We have Counselor Green with a question. Counselor Green, the floor is yours.
Yes, my question would be directly to Mr. Curry, please.
All right, let's, let's unmute him. Director Curry, we're going to unmute you and invite you into the meeting here. Can you hear us, Mr. Curry? Steve Curry, can you hear us? It's like we're having some, some difficulty there. Counselor, why don't you field your question and let's see if we have a chance to get him back in there.
My question would be specifically with our partnership with Monticent Public Health Network. Who, who, who is that entity? I, I guess, how, and how, how do we share that money is with them?
Mr. Curry, we're going to unmute you here. Can you, I'm going to try to bring you in now. Looks like you connected to audio. Perhaps unsuccessfully. Give it one more moment. I see it's pooling here.
I can wait, and I can certainly, I can feel free to reach him, you know, privately and ask him that. And where it's a grant, I don't want to turn it down. I'm, I'm just curious on who that entity is and how we partner with them, specifically with how we divide up the money and who's in charge of allocating what money goes to where.
And Counselor, I, I think we could also organize some time. You know, they have periodically come before the council and given an update. And perhaps this is a great opportunity to, to do a little public awareness about the great work that they're, that they're doing on the grants. I believe Sue Christiansen is leading some of that effort. And so I'm happy to, happy to do that if you don't feel that this holds you from, from voting on the matter this evening.
It, it would not ever prevent me from moving forward with accepting grant money.
So Counselor, I, I'm happy to work with you on that. And we can, we can schedule perhaps a brief presentation with Director Curry on this item.
Well into the fall. Yeah, well into the fall.
Understood. So the matter is before the, the council.
Make a motion. We accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept 1620. Speaking on the motion, seeing no objections, we'll do this by unanimous consent. Wait a moment here. If there's any objections, now would be your time. Seeing no objections, we have adopted 16620 by unanimous consent. Next, we have 16720. And these are both for parks. So I'm going to take these together, 167 and 16820. Order that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts earmark grant in the approximate amount of $43,000 for the purpose of said grant, which is to support the design and construction of the proposed Sam Pollock community playground at Park Hill Park. And 16820, the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts earmark grant in the approximate amount of $25,000 for the set purpose of said grant, which is to improve the softball field at Coolidge Park. Joining us this evening is Nate LaRose, Director of Parks and Recreation. The matter, matters 167 and 68 are before the council. And we have a question by Counselor Green. The floor is yours. Counselor Schultz, I see you as well.
My question would be to Nate LaRose. Is any of the proposed construction at Park Hill Park, is any of that for the handicap accessibility? Any part of that playground to address any of our children with disabilities?
The entirety of this is meant to fund the accessible and inclusive playground program that, that we just recently did a public hearing on a few weeks ago. Community Development has submitted an additional grant to fund design and construction of Phase One of that project. These monies would be used to support the design as well as any other funds that come up. Because it's state funding, it can't be used to match that incoming grant if we do receive it.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted the public to be aware that this specifically will be a park designated to serve children that may have before never been able to participate in one of our public playgrounds. So I commend the effort and the time and diligence in seeking such said grant. So thank you to you and your team for that.
All right. Next, we have Counselor Schultz. The floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to comment on that as well, that it's great that the community's getting together to, to have an all-inclusive park where disabled children will be able to participate. And I also wanted to comment on the, the improvements of the softball complex at Coolidge Park. So many, so many kids are involved in, in that endeavor as well. So I'm greatly in favor of both projects. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. LaRose, thank you for, for the work that you and your department and your, your board do on, on both these issues. Great job securing these funds. It's wonderful to see, and I know it'll go to, to great use. Next, we have Counselor Boishman. Counselor, the floor is yours.
I just want to say thank you for picking Park Hill. I think it's great. I'm very, I'm all excited and I'm happy about it. And I don't get happy too often. Thank you very much.
And Counselor, with that, you just made our evening. So thank you. I have 167 and 168 that are before the council.
Make a motion, will you accept?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept 167 and 16820. Speaking on the motion, unless there is any objection, we'll adopt by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is adopted. Thank you, Mr. LaRose. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Next, we have 16920. We're going to bring in Calvin Brooks for, for this item. It is ordered that pursuant to Mass General Lodge, Chapter 44, Section 32, the city of Fitchburg hereby approves the August 2020 continuing appropriation budget totaling $7,109,905 as follows. General funds, $6,301,707. Water enterprise fund, $281,549. Waste water enterprise fund, $478,537. Airport fund, $48,112. And as further detailed in the attached spreadsheet. Counselors, these are the same items consistent with what was presented to us by Auditor Brooks and the finance team during the, the June budget hearing and is before us this evening.
Motion to approve 16920.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve 16920. I'll take this by unanimous consent unless there is objection. Pause for a moment. Seeing no objection, we will adopt 16920 by unanimous consent. It is so done. Thank you, Auditor Brooks, for joining us this evening. And 17020 will be sent to a special meeting of the City Council scheduled for 6:00 PM on Tuesday, August 4th. This item will require a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, this does not require roll call vote to send it to the meeting director. Okay. With that, we will, we will send that barring objection to the special meeting by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is so moved. 171, order other authorizing the city clerk to notify the voters of the primary election to be held on September 1st, 2020. I would ask for a motion and second.
So moved. Second.
A motion and second to approve 17120. Speaking on the motion. Unless there is any objection, we will adopt by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, we will approve 17120. Ordinance 17220. An ordinance amending the zoning bylaw, be amended by striking the bylaw in its entirety, inserting in its place the attached zoning bylaw represented, representing Phase One of the rewriting of the city's zoning bylaw reference petition, 2920. This is the first reading. I would ask that we send this to the first, send it to its first reading at the special meeting of the City Council on August 4th, 2020. Barring objection, we'll do this by unanimous consent. I would need a motion and second.
So moved.
I have a motion and second. Questions from counselors? Seeing none, barring objection by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it will be sent to its first reading on August 4th. Petitions, 173 up to and including 17720 will be sent to their respective committees. And that would conclude the agenda for the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, which will do by unanimous consent. Counselors, just keep it into our view in public. Special meeting of the Fitchburg City Council will take place on Tuesday, August 4th at 6:00 PM, and the appointments committee will occur at 5:45 immediately prior to. That said, I have a motion and second. Seeing no objections, we will adjourn by unanimous consent. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.